This is the March 27th. Lakeville Select Board Meeting, 6:00 PM. Is anyone other than Lake Cam Recording and our Rusty taking notes? Okay, so we're gonna jump right into Select Board announcements. And kinda late tonight on the announcements. We do have a reminder that next Monday, April 3rd, is voting for local election. The voting times are 12 to 8:00 PM. So this is the afternoon voting. And we are all still voting at Loon Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp from 12 to 8:00. Don't forget, we have the little pin pads that you can go in. You can type, scan your ID, or but it's a little bit quicker to get in there. So if you think you don't have time, you really do. Because it's quicker to get in through the check-in line. 12 to 8:00. All right, Town Administrator announcements. That would be you, Ari.
Okay, thank you. Some brief announcements, Madam Vice Chair. We've moved forward with a number of grant proposals over the past few weeks. The Massachusetts Historical Commission's grant application to replace the Old Town Hall roof has been submitted. Additional letters of interest for the Betty's Neck, John Pond Park, and Bridge Street one-stop grant projects have been submitted to the state. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation has scheduled a virtual public hearing on its planned replacement of the Precinct Street Route 140 bridge, which is anticipated to begin construction in spring 2024. The virtual hearing will be held online beginning at 6:00 PM this Wednesday, 29th of March. Information about the hearing can be found at www.mass.gov/highways-division/events and on the town's Facebook page. Numbered facilities projects are moving along well. The fire station renovations are largely complete. There's a little bit to do in the bathroom, but it's very small. The Gamache Playground project was awarded to Alter Play, which while the site work will be bid separately. The John Pond Park Shed project is underway, and the Clear Pond Park Shed is out to bid. The outdoor pavilion stage cover is being rebid with modified specifications, while the Historic Library Ramp project is being ready for bid. It'll be shortly. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be on Monday, April 10th, in the Lakeville Police Station.
Okay. Anyone questions on any of the announcements? I did see several folks on the bridge today. The Precinct Street, 104140, SBOT cars, so. All right, so next I would like Agenda Item Number Three is meet with the town clerk to discuss the recodification project. So Lillian Drain, Town Clerk, could you please join us? So just a brief history before Lillian gets started. This is something that we've been working on for three years. It is a recodification of all the bylaws, and I will turn the rest over to you.
Okay, so it's a codification to our bylaws. Our bylaws are currently as a Word document. While this approach has served the town well at this point, and it's time to professionally codify our bylaws, as well undertake a complete review of our bylaws. We have some Mass General laws that are obsolete that's still on the books. So the solution for us is to get this organized, have it easily and fully searchable online version. It could be, it's a platform called the Ecode 360. Currently, the general code serves over 3,000 municipalities across the United States and Canada. 135 is part of Massachusetts. Town of Middleborough has the codification of their bylaws. The town of Dartmouth, the city of Fall River, the city of Taunton, the town of Easton, the town of Marion, and the town of Plymouth. The codification is bringing all the amendments through November 14 of 2022. That includes all the general and zoning bylaws that just took place. Who benefits this? The staff, our planners and developers, our attorneys, our citizens. The article was approved on June 3rd, 2019, Article 5, capital of improvements, and that was voted for $10,000 for the cost of codification. It carried a two-thirds vote, and it passed unanimously. So the cost of this codification is $7,845, and it was launched on January 7th of 2020. And of course, throughout COVID, that put me behind in the state presidential year that of course put the project behind. So here we are, ready to launch this. It's completely done. We just have to go before town meeting and accept it as is with all the general bylaws changes in the zoning. This planning board would have to hold a public hearing because they're just gonna change, they're going to accept the changes of the numerical part of it and some grammar that they need to correct. So this was a huge undertaking, but we got it done. I'm very proud that Lakeville will have this, and I'm pretty sure a planner is gonna enjoy our codification. And so, do you have any questions?
Currently, all our bylaws are like in a Word document.
Yes.
And this will make that much more professional.
Correct.
And going forward, there's even other software that we can purchase to make it even, you go to a map and it'll even pull up zoning, which is down the road, but this is the first step.
This is the first step.
Yep. To being able to do that.
We needed this done a long time ago, and here we are, finally getting it done.
Yep.
Madam Vice Chair, this week we'll be posting the draft codification on the website so people can see it. It's very long, it's the only one thing we could bring today.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's my, you know, that's my biggest concern for, you know, a lot of times folks get to town meeting and that's the first time they may see the warrant themselves. But, you know, we just wanna let people know that if you go to the website, you'll be able to look at it ahead of time. We still have, what, four, five, six weeks, I think, before town meeting? And, you know, you can submit questions, and if we can't get either the Town Administrator or the Town Clerk to answer those questions, or then there's also gonna be the hearing process, which will take place on the whole thing. But I just want folks to know that, you know, it'll be posted, and the old bylaws in their form are available if people wanna, you know, compare the two line for line. But we actually welcome folks to, you know, to look at it and look for the changes. And it is, like you said, very important because some of the laws don't even exist anymore that are reflected in our bylaws. So we need to, you know, get all that updated, so.
So we'll have two versions, the red line?
Yep.
And then the final draft, so they can see the actual changes.
Yep.
Lil, thank you for you, you know, spearheading this with your team. I know it was a huge undertaking. But just for the residents, if they wanna see what the final product would look like, Lil mentioned a few of the towns that actually have this recodification type of a system of the 360. So I went onto Middleborough's site today and, you know, just take a look at their, you know, their bylaws. The ease of use is phenomenal. So it's, it's a lot of work that went into this beautiful end product, and I think it's just, like you said, it's just gonna benefit, you know, quite a few players here in town. But yeah, moving forward, I mean, I just know the work that you guys had to do, you know, in that Word document, but.
It was a team. It was back and forth, but we got it done. It was an easy.
Yeah. So I do encourage people to go take a look at, you know, our city town, Middleborough, and, you know, see what the final product would look like.
Thank you.
Mark, any?
No, as Lillian said, this is a long time coming. Unfortunately, COVID delayed us to get it done, but you've done a terrific job here, Lillian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you very much. I actually was part of this committee with you, Lil. And it was really overwhelming at the beginning when we were going through the process. And of course, you streamlined everything for everybody, which, you know, I thank you for, but it's nice to finally see it, you know, going to town meeting for approval. So, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, next we have Agenda Item Number Four. Meeting with the Town Planner to discuss the draft housing production plan. All right. What can you tell us here, Mark?
Okay, well, this is, unfortunately, SERPED, which is our regional planning agency, is doing the update, but they were unable to attend your meeting tonight, so which is why I'm here. This is your annual five-year update to the plan. Plans are good for five years, after which they need to be updated in order to still be effective. Primarily, they're effective to communities if you would like to claim safe harbor. If you have lots of 40Bs, you can call kind of a timeout on future 40Bs for a year or two. And it also helps the community set a direction for the types of housing in the community and evaluate the needs of your community through surveys, public meetings, et cetera. So, so the Planning Board reviewed the plan at their first meeting in March, after which SERPED made some adjustments after they forwarded those comments to me. That's when I forwarded it to the Select Board, so that you had the same opportunity to read it in their comments, and I received some from Rich, which I did forward, excuse me, on to SERPED. And so that's where we are today.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mark at this point on this?
No, just, I just have a comment. I thought that the, you know, there was a little slight change in the presentation of the document, so I found that to be a little bit more appealing while I was reading it, because it's, you know, it's a pretty comprehensive document. There's a lot of data, and it just, it read a little bit.
Smoother than the old one?
Yes, yes. I know, I know that a lot of work went into this one too, but, so. I know that there were some highlighted ones, highlighted on here. Can you talk us through a little bit about what those highlights were for?
So the yellow highlights are the little, are the changes that SERPED made since after the Planning Board review of the first draft of this. So then they, they made the edits, and they put them in yellow so that you could see what they, what they did.
And what's the process now? So now it comes in front of us, so we receive the, you know, the draft.
Yeah. And then if you're okay with the draft, then it goes back to the Planning Board to meet with SERPED on the, the next Planning Board meeting, I think it's 13th of April. And if, if they are okay with the draft as it is, it'll get forwarded to DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. They review the draft, they send back comments, and then both boards need to vote to adopt after, you know, adjusting for any comments, the final plan for it to be effective.
Is there a timeline that we would need to have this adopted by?
So our, our current plan expires now, so, you know, we could submit it at any time, you know?
Thank you.
I think you were planning to have it through to the Planning Board in, in April, correct?
That's correct. The 13th of April for approval of the draft to send to DHCD.
And the 24th for.
Yes. SERPED will be there in case there are any questions.
Okay, so we should get something back, so I'm thinking May?
Well, the idea would be that the, I think we're planning for the Select Board to approve it on the 24th of April, correct?
But we have to get comments back from DHCD first, right?
Oh, you wanted to come back?
Yeah, you're sending it for comments.
Yes.
It's coming back.
That's correct.
And the Planning Board will adopt, and then the Select Board will adopt. It'll be done.
Right.
So, so the comments coming back from DHCD should come back. They need to come back, well, before April, mid, like, before, like, early April. If they don't come back early April, then it's gonna take, then.
It gets pushed back.
I mean, yeah, if, if, so it won't go out until after the next Planning Board meeting. You know, if they make modifications to this document, then we'll, I'll resubmit it to you, because I don't wanna submit a document that, you know, the Select Board doesn't agree with. I also don't wanna submit a document that DHCD is not going to approve. There are actual guidelines that you must follow in order to have a plan that gets approved by DHCD, and it needs to include, you know, certain elements and discussions of housing, which is exactly what it's for.
Okay, so I know that this is the actual document written by SERPED, and it has in it a couple of, not corrections, but just, it reflects a few questions. I know the Planning Board had a couple of questions, but I do know that there is another suggested edit out there, but that other suggested edit, that other edited document wasn't approved, let's say, by the Planning Board, correct?
No, no document has been approved.
Has been approved by them.
That was the purpose of the meeting coming up, was for them to approve it and then send it out. Between the time that I submitted it to your board and, and tonight, a edited version was produced by one of the Planning Board members. I don't know how the rest of the board is gonna feel about it, but I can again tell you that SERPED will not submit that document. It does not meet the guidelines from DHCD, and.
Yeah. And that, and for that exact reason is why I, you know, I knew there was another document circulating, but I went ahead and selected this one as the one that, because that's the one we contracted with SERPED to do this. This is the draft they wrote, and this is the one that, you know, I feel as though will make it through the state housing folks, so, okay. Does anyone else have any other questions on this?
Just the fact that, you know, we all could have submitted, like, I believe, you mentioned that.
Yes, that's.
Rich had submitted some, you know, some comments. I believe that maybe the other document that you are referring to, Madam Vice Chair, is just somebody that had comments.
Yep.
So it's not like we're, we're looking at the document that was presented as the draft, and we're making comments on that, not anybody else's.
Right. We're looking at the one that was presented from SERPED.
Correct.
Which was reviewed by the Planning Board.
Yeah, yes.
And their suggested changes, and those suggested changes are incorrect.
Are in here. Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
The changes by the Planning Board that were discussed.
Correct. Yep, are in here.
Not as one-off.
Alternative document.
Right. So, just to, just to follow, make sure, the comments that I had sent you, Mark, did you verify the numbers that I, I said were not correct?
Yeah.
I think it's, was it 4168 somewhere in there? 4168, 4183? Right. So that's, that's correct. Yeah, they're using the numbers that DHCD is still using until the final census numbers are officially released, so that's why it's the lower number. So when this document gets submitted, then they would use the census numbers, right? Yes, they will use. Okay. The other thing that was in there, and I, and I mentioned to you, and it was in the hazardous plan as well, you know, that we don't have any sewer in town, and it shows that we have sewer. We don't have any sewer in town at all. So that, I, I, that needs to be removed. Yes. You know? They will do that. As well. The only other question that I had is that, I forget what I was looking for. Section talks about 104 pieces of town-owned property, and I think the majority of those pieces that are owned by the town are either preserved as open space or conservation land, so that number is probably substantially lower than that 104. So that may, you might wanna bring that up as an issue. Right. Part of what their requirements, they're required to talk about town land to see if the town owns some land that could be developed for housing. Most land we own is either conservation land or really small parcels that the town.
Or cemeteries.
Cemeteries.
And cemeteries.
Cemeteries.
Draining, drainage easements, and all those things. So I just don't want people to think that there's 104 pieces of property to be developed. There isn't, you know? So, I don't know if you wanna clarify that. That's what I had.
I think that's important too.
You know? But I guess, I guess other than that, the only, the only other thing, you know, I guess, you know, I looked at the 2017 plan, okay? And actually, Lorraine, you were on that committee at the time, if you recall.
I was, I was supporting the committee, yes.
So in the plan, it talks about inclusionary zoning. And does everybody know what inclusionary zoning means? I do. Do you? Everybody? Okay. And the second thing is having to do with an open space bylaw. Now, both of those were recommended in the plan. And they're recommended in this new plan, right? I don't understand why the open space bylaw hasn't been brought forward when it was presented the last town meeting, and then it was withdrawn, and it's not being presented again at either the special or the annual town meeting. So I don't understand why that isn't being brought forward. It will be brought forward for the fall town meeting. You know, they had over a year to deal with it, but, you know. It's been a busy year, so. Anyway, so, you know, I think that's pretty important. Both of those are pretty important. Anyways, so I just wanna point out that, besides all the statistical stuff. Yes. Which is a lot of stuff, you know? Some of the things in the recommendations are the same recommendations that were in the 2017 plan. I didn't check 2012, but, you know, just so everybody knows.
Great. All right. Thank you on that. Okay. So, next we have Mark with us to discuss, the Planning Board sent us a request. It says, "The Planning Board is requesting that no parking signs be posted on the south side of Ken," I'm sorry, it's about Kenneth Welch Drive. "Kenneth Welch Drive opposite the building located at 310 Kenneth Welch Drive. Employees have been parking off the paved roadway but on the shoulder across from 310 Kenneth Welch Drive for over a year. The owner businesses have tried to address this issue by expanding the parking lot twice. However, the number of additional spaces were insufficient to accommodate all the employees. Last fall, the new ownership group had plans prepared to expand the western parking lot to provide all the required parking. However, this effort has stalled as full plans including drainage calculations were never submitted to the Planning Board under the required notice of intent was not filed with the Conservation Commission. Also, a change in property management companies this winter may have affected their schedule." So.
Madam Vice Chair, one thing I should mention as well, because it was conveyed to me on Friday, was there were concerns about the drainage situation on the south side of Kenneth Welch Drive, and what the impact of having cars parked there would mean. We were about contamination, which I think is one thing that might come up that the missions here.
Okay. So I know that there's been so much talk in the last few months about this piece of property, and I do know that many department heads, including Fire Chief, Police Chief, Board of Health Commissioner, Town Administrator, Town Planner, has been meeting almost nonstop with, you know, the management for 310 Kenneth Welch Drive. So we do have people parking on town property on the other side there. And while I understand their desire to sort of help come up with a solution, I don't necessarily think no parking signs is, is a great solution. I think it's only gonna add to the problem. I, you know, it's my opinion, and Rich, you know, certainly can speak for himself, but I see parking, no parking signs as a bigger problem because, first of all, it has to be enforced. What's the sense of having them there, which means the police are gonna have to go by and write tickets? Then we have to hold hearings for all these people who are just trying to go to work and find a place to park their car. It doesn't really help solve the parking problem. So I do know that the management company has changed, and for the first time, I believe, in recent history, the actual owners of the property joined a meeting instead of just having their representation with town staff. Town Administrator, Planner, who else was there? Fire Chief.
Building Inspector.
Building Inspector.
Fire Chief, Health Agent.
Health Agent.
I think that was it.
Yeah. So that to me is progress. I'm not saying that a problem doesn't exist, because we all know it does, but again, I don't necessarily know that no parking signs is a solution. I think it would almost exacerbate the problem, and I would much rather work on other ways to address the parking, and I think this is a deeper, more work has to be done, but, you know, they have sent us their memo, and I'm gonna let Rich, you know, say his feelings, and then he and I can talk about whether, you know, we wanna decide to do the parking signs or not, no parking signs.
I agree, this should be a solution. If no parking signs, this isn't gonna do us any good. If they're already parking on town-owned property, all we have to do is notify them not to park there anymore, but they don't seem to listen to that, okay? The problem is, is that, you know, this has been going on for over a year and a half, okay? This isn't just recently. And I don't know how many site plans that they have submitted, Mark, but I, I understand it's about five different site plans that they've come forward for the Planning Board to review and so forth and so on, somewhere in that vicinity. I also understand that the Planning Board gave them temporary parking, okay? They extended that temporary parking, and that parking has now expired, from what I understand. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So the, the issue that I have is, is that the quote-unquote "owners" of that building have been multiple owners of that building, have never told the town who's gonna be in that building, okay? We know two marijuana facilities are in that building, and we know another company that's been there for years, I can't think of the name.
CJ.
Thank you. Has been in that building. But they never told us how many parking spaces or how many employees they have in those facilities. So I don't know how you make a decision on a site plan without understanding that this marijuana facility has 200 employees, this one has 250, and CJ has, you know, 50, whatever. That, that's the leading factor, and none of that has been done, you know, that says what, how many people on the, and they're running three, they're running three shifts there, the marijuana companies are, at least, I believe, at least one of them, as I know that. Is it two? Does anybody know? Whatever. So in order to come up with a solution, you need to know what it is, what's their business, and then you could say to them, "Okay, you only get space for 500 cars," or whatever it happens to be. That's a problem, okay? That's a problem, okay? We knew it's been a problem. It's been a problem at that facility for a long, long time. And you know, now since the summer operations started up with, I think I was told they have two hundred employees working in the new facility, somewhere in that area. But that's an issue. But that, that's only one of the issues having to do with that facility. And we're going to be talking about that next, um, because it's been an ongoing problem.
So just two, so everyone kind of understands that the temporary parking lot was the expanded lot in the front of the building, um, which was their second expansion in the front of the building. That was um, to be a permanent lot and they were supposed to bring the design in um, toward the end of last summer, which they did do. Uh, but they also, it was clear they needed more spaces. So they designed a lot on the west side to expand that parking lot where the truck bays are. Um, that's the, the overall plan with those two lots, making the front one permanent and expanding the back one. That's the plan that stalled. Um, and that does include a um, total parking count for the businesses. Um, and um, based on that, that's how they got to the expansion number. Um, however, the biggest problem in the last few months, you know, was um, that they didn't follow through and finish. Um, you know, they'd be getting ready for construction because they should have been through the approval process by now. But that kind of stalled. Uh, since I sent the memo to you and tonight, um, they have filed with the conservation commission. So, so they are now restarting the, the process to uh, permit the parking lot.
The other problem was that they decided because of the uh, uh, natural gas situation. Okay, because they found out after the fact, and they should have known right up front that uh, NSTAR could not increase the capacity of that line up to the building. That, you know, they took a back part of that parking lot, which was at least twenty or thirty spaces or more. And they're putting these tanks in there with gas in there in order to run the facility. So that caused another problem, which is still pending, from what I understand, too. So to answer your question, I'm sorry, people have to understand where that came from.
Yeah, no, I know. It's, and it's not as easy as just putting up no parking signs because.
I, I don't know why we, you know, does that mean we put up no parking signs throughout the uh, industrial park? I don't think that's necessary to do that. I think you just notify the owner that um, if he doesn't come up with a solution by X date, you know, he doesn't get it done by X date, then um, we're going to notify him and they're going to ticket him. And if they don't continue, if they don't do it, then we tell them.
Right.
You know, and get them out of there because they are on town owned property. So I don't think the parking signs are going to do any good, I really don't. Uh, well, yes, the chief.
I was going to say, um, I don't know if Chief Perkins can join us for a minute. I know that I've talked about this with him, you know, maybe even over a month ago. Um, but you know, and partly I feel bad for the folks who are going to get the tickets because they're just trying to go to work every day. It's their boss's responsibility. It's not like they work in the city or something where they're told not to bring a car in. But I mean, I, I, do you agree that it's almost going to make it worse? Am I wrong or?
So if um, if no parking signs go up there tomorrow, the people are going to try to park somewhere else. So they're going to park on private property, they're going to park in the street or they're going to block fire exits and fire access along the driveways. So it's going to create more of a problem and more of hazard. Um, but if the signs went up, we'd go down there and would write tickets. If you do set a date where it's like you want them to have a solution by X day and then we would do enforcement, we would still need the signs there to enforce it. Um, I can't just go write it. I mean, there would have to be some type of sign there restricting the parking. Um, and then I would be able to go and uh, write parking tickets for restricted parking.
Okay, so we can't just notify them?
If you, then, then the person who parks there, did they get notified?
Right.
Maybe the employee got notified, but the person who's parking there might not have been notified.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, the other possibility, which I know was talked about before, you know, even before you came here, Mark, that, you know, the Talbot's parking lot's got a thousand car space, there's nothing there. Why don't they call Talbot's and say, can we park there temporarily and we'll, we'll, we'll.
Shuttled van people.
Down there. I mean, you know, I mean, that's, that's a temporary solution, you know, to consider, but.
I think they have a new tenant now too, though, don't they?
I mean.
Talbot's has a new tenant now.
Uh, yeah, but I'm sure they'd say, you know, that's not a problem. I mean, there is other spaces down there as well, I'm just throwing that out as an idea. Because right now, it's not being utilized at all, so anyways.
Yeah, I mean, I, and again, I think it's encouraging that, you know, last week's meeting did involve the owners, which is the first time they've come, I think, in, you know, they've been relying on their um, their management people. And we all know that the management company just changed. So now it's a new management company that's trying to get up to speed. So, you know, I almost feel like we have to give them a little bit of time. But I just don't want it to be open ended either because it's been going on way too long.
Way too.
Way too long.
And I know we'll get into that a little bit in the next, the next item. But um, you know, we're doing everything we can to try to kind of build this, this conversation, this relationship that didn't exist before and which we've been trying to, as you know, for months and months, trying to put together even longer than that, so.
Yeah. Okay, um, I think I can speak for the fire chief, although if he wants to come up and talk himself as far as he doesn't want anyone blocking fire access. But you know, um, I, we can probably.
The police chief had on the IMC. The, the buildings, the building isn't the, the, the lot layout. The site isn't anything that would be approved nowadays. And I don't know how it got that way, it's before my time. And so I'm afraid of that one car, just take one car to completely block off the, the rear of that building for me. And that's, that's what I'm concerned about, the unintended consequences.
Okay, thank you. So I'm.
I'll make a motion not to approve the parking signs.
Okay, um, I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so. Um, of course, if need be, we can always revisit that.
I, I do think, Ari, you know, we ought to try to get some, some commitment here. I think you said to go into the conservation.
They're going to.
I believe.
So we. I can update the, the board um, as this moves forward through the approval process and then find out what their construction timeline is as well.
Is it doable that the planning board, with, with the conservation commission, assuming they agree with this?
Mm-hmm.
At their next meeting, vote this permit?
Uh, we still need to have the drainage reviewed. We still haven't received the drainage calculations, so.
From?
Uh, from the engineer who's doing the project.
Are we having a peer review done on that?
For the?
Yes.
Peer review engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not a peer review.
Our peer review engineer is environmental partners for this project, so. But we need the drainage calculations in order for them to do. They're just going to look at the engineering uh, drainage, that's all. Um, because the rest of the parking is pretty straightforward.
Okay.
So it should take one meeting once that's complete.
Okay. Um, okay, so, all right, we're done with that. So the next item agenda is still with um, three ten Kenneth Welch Drive. And Ari, maybe you can um, go into a little bit more detail because I do know that you're working on this on a daily basis. And um, I know you, you're all working on this, but um, and then I'll, you know, Rich and I can just offer our comments.
So there've been numerous issues associated with this property. Um, my involvement, really, really deeply engaged when we came in with the water issue. But um, but it's been going on before that and you know, the, the whole picture is, is such that um, that you really have four major areas of concern. Public safety, fire access, that sort of thing, systems management. Parking, which we've talked about just, just now, the water, the water matter. And uh, septic, which is really corollary to the water issue because septic issue is an issue because of all the water they're using. So um, we're, uh, this meeting we had with them last week was, was helpful in the sense that it kind of clarified some things and laid out what our expectations are. I feel like we've had a number, several meetings now with the new property managers and with the, and with this one with the ownership, where we, you know, kind of put our cards on the table and said, this is what we need to get done. And they've indicated they're willing to do that, but the jury's kind of out as to whether they're going to, you know, do, do what they need to do. Um, for example, you know, we're well engaged and, and then on the, on the water issue, for example. And um, but we still don't have the new connection request. We've been told the old connection request is no longer valid. So the fifty thousand gallons per day they're asking for at one point, that's off the table. And um, I've made, we've made that very clear, that's, that's a non-starter, even thirty thousand is really a non-starter. Um, and I uh, uh, shared with them the, um, with the ownership last, at the meeting last week, um, the, some of the history of the um, uh, where, where the, where the cannabis companies especially, who are the largest consumers, that they were recycling water, they weren't going to be, you know, so on. Part of the problem is that just the whole HVAC system there and the evaporators. But, but a bigger, but we all, but almost equally big part of the problem is one grower, one of the growers in particular, who's not recycling water particularly and has been, according to the property owners, not particularly helpful to deal with. And that's Juicy. Um, they said, they said Northeast Alternatives is actually not using that much water and they're recycling. They don't know what they should be doing, but Juicy's kind of just flushed it away. And um, and that, that's a, that's a real problem. And unfortunately, the prior property managers were kind of asleep at the switch and didn't really enforce anything. So this is all at this point. Um, the, uh, I, they asked, the, the property owners at the last meeting asked me and I shared with them the excerpts from the two thousand and seventeen board meeting where the interest remedy representative said, yes, we're recycling water, we don't need much, you know, you remember that whole discussion?
Yep, yep.
And um, he, he thanked me for that, it was very helpful because they've been trying to engage with Juicy about that issue as well. Um, so I think they've gotten our message that, you know, the water situation, as it was proposed, is not tenable for us. It's not acceptable, it's not going to fly. And um, and I get the impression that tactically speaking, it doesn't have to. Um, they just have to do the technology they need to do to recycle, to recycle water, to use it the way that, to use it, you know, a couple. They have to a little bit of investment, but, but that, but that's, but it's doable to get to a point where the water consumption is, I don't know if it's going to be five thousand gallons per day, which is what they're approved for right now, but it won't be, you know, thirty.
Right.
It won't be, you know, something like that. So um, you know, they didn't commit the saying, we'll keep it to five. But they definitely said, I'd say, right, that, that, that's not going to be a big number.
It was a range that were. But they needed to do more analysis in, in order to kind of have a concrete number to come in.
Right, so they're, they're working through that and hopefully, and I'm going to ping them this week again, saying, where are we on that? I've, I've been doing that on a regular basis. Um, the um, the septic is related to that issue because again, it's all overuse. Um, at the um, meeting, um, Ed Collin gave a good overview of the septic capacity. And told them, you know, listen, you know, it's a finite number and there's really no technical, technical way to expand that number because of, you know, they're sharing, right, Ed, they're sharing a, a field?
They were.
They were sharing a field, right. Yeah, um, and um, you know, they actually, we actually came to our, to like, we didn't know this, that they installed an above ground tank to, um, for, to have, for excess waste, which they're in turn, which they're in turn were pumping every, several times a week. Remember what they said, right? They didn't say that?
Uh, well, they did, but I think that's for the waste from the operation, not.
It was water, though.
Yes, it was water.
Waste, waste water, I left out a word, I should have said waste water.
Waste water.
Um, and they're, and they're, and they're hauling out, which gives you a table of how much water is going to waste here.
Right.
Um, so, you know, I, I feel like if we, the way to deal with the septic issue is to deal with the water issue. The way to deal with the water issue, you know, so I, I think that, that, that's, that's at least my thought at this point. Parking, we've talked about, public safety, um, Chief O'Brien's here. That's probably the place where they made the greatest progress to date so far. Because it was frankly, it was not strictly the area where we really say, listen, you know, fix this some kind of way, we're going to be shutting you down. So they, they, the property management was much more engaged than, the current property manager, which is a company called Lincoln Properties, was much more engaged than Peregrine was before. Mike, I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit?
Just briefly, we had a, a four page, four page notice of violation on the property. Um, we're down to two violations, significant violations, but, but they, but they've come a long way in a very short time. And the most significant violation for me was the fact that they tapped into a fire hydrant. Any fire hydrant in town, they, they require my sign off to tap into. They did it without my permit. And so that was the most, it's related to the water issue. And they corrected that and.
And this, to be fair, the city town allowed them to.
Yes, the city town had a little education on that too.
Yeah.
So, um, significant progress, down to two violations left.
But that's been over time. It, you've been working with them for a while.
This is really since, there was nothing happening up until the new company came in, that was February first.
Yeah.
And, or is it February first or January third? And, and they, um, um, we had several meetings where we made things very clear. And they, they, to their credit, they dove in on this stuff.
Yeah, we have, we've had several walkthroughs with them. It's, it's time consuming, but they, they're, there's some fruit to the, to the labor. They're actually doing stuff now.
So we, we feel like we just need to keep our, keep our feet on the gas and keep the pressure on them. Um, and you know, water is actually very useful in that respect because we're able to say to them, I mean, I've been able to say with great confidence that, you know, the select board is never going to approve.
Right.
A big water number, which forces other changes.
Right. Um, but it still leaves, you know, the obvious problem here that we have our fire chief working on this, if not daily, then at least a couple of times during the week.
This is the one building that takes the most, the most, the largest amount of my time.
Right, your time, the town planner's time, the health agent's time, the police chief's time, the building inspector's time. I mean, I would definitely call it a problem property and um, I, I don't necessar- I'm not necessarily ready to put like an end date, you know, but we, we just, how long do we go?
I agree, I mean, we've talked about this property many times, even on our board meetings, you know, over the last year and a half or more, for that matter. But you know, it just concerns me, he talks, I'll go, I'll get out to the, the, Mike, our chief already talked about public safety concerns. But you know, if you look at number two, um, a cost is an issue. The initial proposal was priced at two million dollars, uh, but they've indicated their intention to proceed. So if it's a two million dollar, quote unquote, two million dollar project, this isn't going to be done overnight.
Right.
It's going to take months, you know, to get this thing resolved.
I think it's going to take some time.
Right?
Yep.
So that, that's why, you know, concerned about, you know, the temporary parking or whatever. But it was um, the water issue um, was a total surprise, you know, to us that uh, they had four wells on site, but they weren't using those wells, you know, effectively. And now all of a sudden, they're using some of that effectively. But in the meantime, they had asked us to provide them fifty thousand gallons a day.
Right.
More, okay? And, and also, they went around, they went behind our back, fire chief's back, and hooked up the hydrant, you know, to get the water. I mean, that's, that's not good.
No.
What kind of company are we dealing with here? You know, that, that's an issue, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that you know.
It might be, I'm sorry, I shouldn't interrupt. And it might be, might be a matter of convenience, but you know, they're, they're definitely, the management, the ownership is definitely placing either by inference or directly, a lot of blame on, you know.
The previous.
The departed property manager.
What about the tenants?
Yeah.
Tenants knew about it.
Right. Well, tenants didn't hook up the water.
Well, but they, they knew about it.
Yeah.
They knew where the water was coming from. And then, then the uh, you know, as, as Ari said and Ed said, you know, tens of thousands of gallons a day are going into these tanks.
Right.
They're not wastewater, the water. Uh, then they have to pump out those tanks a couple of times a day, you know?
Yeah.
I mean.
It's always, it's always three times a week, but.
I mean, whatever.
Yeah, but, but your point remains, yeah.
But the previous owner, you know, knew about that. The previous owner knew about that, you know, and, you know, I mean, it's a problem. And in the meantime, they say, we weren't going to pay anything to the town anymore, you know, on our benefit fees. So here we are, we're trying to accommodate them and they're sticking it to us.
So I wasn't sure how, I wasn't sure how much to get into that in an open session, but I can tell, but since we brought it up, I can tell you that we did make it, I mean, it very clear to the ownership that this issue's going on.
But the ownership is the ownership. But the ownership is the ownership of the building.
Right.
Not the marijuana.
I was giving, but my point was, I was trying to give them perspective as to one of the reasons why the town's not that receptive to, you know, you know, give a brother a break here and, and, and approve some water, approve a whole lot of water.
Right. Because they're, you know, they needed to know, the ownership needed to know that they don't want our, or their intention may be not to honor their host community agreement.
Right.
So, and that's, you know, that's really, you know, and that, I don't, that's not my problem to try to figure out. I, I don't know what their leases look like between the ownership and the tenants, but I can't imagine that they don't have some kind of stipulations in there regarding, you know, it says in all the documentation, well, we're giving them what's needed for parking according to the lease. Well, I mean, doesn't the ownership have some, you know, responsibility here to enforce something through their own lease if people are, I mean, I, I don't know why all the burden has to be on the town too. And us spending our legal money and all our time, I mean, you know, I can't imagine that they don't have some clauses in their own. Like we said, Nature's Remedy had said that before it became juicy, that they were going to use all kinds of water conservation methods and this and that. I mean.
It's done none of it.
No.
Right.
None of it.
No, and, you know, I, I.
They sold, they sold the, uh, marijuana company for $35 million. And they sold the building for $26.
I can tell you the other company, which we have some issues with the payments as well, but the other company is, is, is doing the right thing as far as water management goes.
Yes.
The, the, this, this problem, the, the impression that we had, the best that we got in that meeting was that this problem is juicy.
I agree. That's been my, my experience as well. Just being there all the time, it's, it's juicy's 90% of the problem.
Yeah. Um, and I, I, you know, I don't want to sugarcoat it here. The, um, this, this became a problem for the man, for the ownership because it became a problem for us.
Right.
If, if, if the town had said, you know, 3,000 gallons, whatever, no problem, and, um, and, uh, and you let people park and, you know, whatever, and pump the water if it happens, you know, and if we take this sort of laissez-faire attitude about it, you know, the, the ownership would have been engaged in, in, in trying to fix this. They're engaged in trying to fix this because we've been, you know.
Right, right.
We've been, we've been turning the screws here.
Right. And, and, okay, so there's a reason for that because we do know that whether they live in Lakeville or not, there's a couple hundred people that have a job that are gainfully employed. We don't want to put anyone out of work, right? But it's getting to the point right now where some of this stuff has to get fixed. And also it's been very important for me to try to do this because I see how much time it takes out of our department heads, you know, busy schedules. I think Rich feels the same way. And, you know, we're kind of driving this. I can't turn away and say, oh, that's okay. They can use all the water resources in town. We don't have.
We don't have.
You know, we don't have an infinite number of gallons that we can give out. If someone's getting, we have so many that the city of Taunton gives us. And once they're used up, we can't approve water to anyone else. I really do think this is a bigger problem than what most folks in town think it to be because we are responsible for the town's resources and water is one of them.
It's a finite amount.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So, you know, um, maybe a different board would think it wasn't a big deal, but I don't know. Rich and I have been here doing this for three and a half years now, almost 40 years. And it's, the problem is not getting better. It's just getting worse. So, um, again, I was encouraged last week with some of the stuff that came out of the, the meeting, including, you know, um, the fact that they just, they, they pretty much said that the other management company, for whatever reason, they changed them out. And I'm willing to let it go a little more, but it's almost like I want to see even small amounts of progress on a regular, steady basis.
My attitude is time will tell and they, and they need to kind of put up here and, um, and, and step up and do what they, what they know they should be doing. You know, we've been trying to get them to do the right thing since June, as far as the water issue goes. It's a long time.
Yep.
So.
Yep. And I do think the ownership itself has to step in and, you know, address it, whatever they have. They've got to have clauses in their own lease that they can help us with, so.
Uh, just to follow up, the, the study supposedly for the water usage, okay, they're supposed to be doing, right?
Yes.
We're talking about that for a year.
Right. Well, I don't think, I don't think it was really happening, Rich, until, I don't think.
No, I know it wasn't happening.
Yeah, I, I think it is happening now. And I, and I think that they, that they want to give us a study that incorporates the technical, the, the technical changes they want to do to force conservation of water. If they, if we were to force them to give us something right now, it would be a number that we couldn't accommodate.
Yep.
Well, what I'm saying, Ari, it, this is not a new problem.
Oh, no, not at all, not at all.
So this is a problem that's been there for well over, maybe even longer.
Yeah.
And, you know, they've been back-dooring it, quite frankly.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's time to tell them, you're going to have this done by X date. Not let them do it on their own terms, you know? And the same thing with the parking. If the parking gets approved by conservation and gets approved by the, uh, by the planning board, date, when are we doing it?
Yep.
You know, you hate to threaten them, but it's time. You know, it really is.
I think that's fair.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Okay. Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mark. All right. Uh, can we?
Hey.
Hey. Skittle, Lorraine.
Can you just, yeah.
Thanks.
So next agenda item is number seven and I, um.
We have some good news.
Okay. And I just was going to say that I really haven't worked on this. I've been working on 5,000 other things. Um, so I'll let, um, Ari.
I'll take care of it.
I'll let Rich, I'll let Rich.
All right. So Rich, we'll have you talk about this.
Okay, is, uh, this is the, uh, LaBarren Development Agreement, believe it or not, that was signed in, uh, 2003. Um, believe it or not, I was on the board at the time. Um, so the development agreement included, you know, uh, installing a water line, you know, down Precinct Street and to connect up the COA, to connect up to the library, to connect up to Assam's at school and to, um, disconnect up the town hall and also the police station here. So that was a pretty significant, you know, project. The second piece of that development agreement was to, um, uh, provide a $250,000 to the, uh, COA. And, um, basically the way that works is, is that a unit is built. When the building permit is issued, they, uh, pay, uh, the town, um, it's 386 units divided by 250, whatever that is. Um, so they happen doing that, you know, on, on a regular basis. The third item was, uh, discussion about installing a sidewalk, uh, down Precinct Street. And, uh, basically, uh, what happened with that was that in 2018, the select board at the time, um, voted to not install that sidewalk because it wasn't just installing the sidewalk. The town was responsible for all the engineering and all the draining, drainage and so forth and so on. And it was a very expensive project to do that. So in the, um, in the, uh, Board of Appeals, uh, they, uh, voted to, um, not do the sidewalk as the select had asked them to do. They refer it back to the select to decide how they wanted to proceed, you know, with, uh, that potential money that would be available. So, um, we've had discussions, Ari and I have had discussions, oh, it's been going on probably for nine months and maybe longer. I don't know. Um, the possibility of, uh, doing something else, you know, for the town. And, uh, one of the things that came up as a possibility was, uh, building the DPW, uh, maintenance garage. Um, excuse me, the maintenance, um, office, you know, for the highway department. Because we've been struggling with that for the last, get that project done from a funding standpoint. So the agreement that you have in front of you is basically saying that they will put up the, they will donate, uh, to the town, um, the highway office and, uh, um, do it at no charge to the town. So, um, that's what's in front of the board tonight. Um, so if the board has any questions, you know, we can discuss it.
Okay. Um, so again, it's not a new agreement. This is an ongoing agreement actually since 2003.
The, the structure here is that the town council recommended was a donation agreement.
Yeah.
Which is, uh, which satisfies the requirements of the comprehensive permit modification to, to provide an alternative to the sidewalk.
If you look, uh, Leah, halfway down that third paragraph, it talks about modification to the, um, 2018. She included the renovation and so forth and so on.
Okay.
So my question is, is this open-ended? Because I put up a Taj Mahal.
And we have, we have a schematic design.
Right. I, I see that, but I mean, it, there's, I mean, because the sidewalk, I think it was two, 250 maybe? Yeah.
Yeah.
Or maybe.
No, there was, there was never a number put on the sidewalk. There was a number put on the COA donation.
Right.
Um, but I don't think there was a number that was still.
That carried over from.
Right.
The change, yeah. Because I was looking for that and that was a question I wanted to bring up tonight, what the monetary.
I have that here somewhere.
Probably monetality was a bit more.
I would think so. I mean, looking at the, especially when we got the, um, the RFPs back for what we had put out there.
We did not RFP it.
No, not this. I'm talking when we were getting bids on.
On the sidewalk.
Yeah.
For before.
Franklin did an analysis of what it would cost to put in the sidewalk, including engineering and drainage. And he estimates the cost to be $600,000.
Okay.
Because we had to pay part of that. We had to pay for all the engineering, all the drainage and whatever. And the big cost, believe it or not.
Utilities.
Was moving the telephone poles, utilities.
Yep.
You know, that was the biggest cost.
They do it purple.
Right.
So I think, I think this is great. I think, um, you know, having something that, you know, through the, the mitigation that, I think this is definitely a betterment for the town. Um, it's needed.
Yeah. I mean, it's not a small building either. It's what, 84 feet, I think?
It was a 22 square feet.
Thereabouts, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is a donation agreement, but does it talk about how, I mean, I didn't see it in here. Maybe I, I don't interpret legalese. Um, how this is going to be carried out as far as, is it at the end and we front the money upfront?
No, no.
No fronting, no.
Um, yeah, the town, the town, no, no monetary transaction takes place from the town. This is strictly, um, allowing them physical access to the site to build the building that's, that's describing the attachments.
I mean, we've been planning from like an operational standpoint, um, that we were going to increase sort of day to day because we wanted to do something there for the last couple of years. It's just we haven't been able to make it happen. So we know when you build a new building, usually the electric bill goes up, the, you know, so we've always had that in the back of our mind. But other than that, I don't really see where the town would pick up any cost. Um, some furniture, maybe?
Yeah, probably some. I, they won't be providing furniture and we have that existing appropriation that we can use.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, that's my only concern. And, and I mean, I certainly would love to have this done yesterday, but I just, you know, like Lorraine, want to be sure that, you know, there's no.
You also noticed that there's, there's several note, uh, locations in the, in this agreement, particularly, um, clause number two, which, um, makes it clear that, that the work has to be done and that is acceptable to the town's.
To the town, yep.
So, um, you know, that, that's something that, you know, Nate will be on and Paul will be on and I'll be watching as well.
Yep.
Reporting back to the board as we go along.
Okay. And no one will be in Franklin's yard without Frank knowing about it.
Yeah, really, I, I, I mean, I think we all know Frank and I don't think he's going to allow substandard product to be.
No, he's not. No. And he's not going to allow, um, inconvenience like, you know, during anything.
The good thing about location is it's such a, is it such a location that, that doesn't generally interfere with the general, with the general operations.
Right.
So that's a good thing.
Right. No, that is a good thing because storm comes, they have to be able to just, whatever it is, hurricane, snowstorm, you know, whatever. Um, but I do like, you know, I do like the, it's a simple, it's a simple design, but man, it works, you know?
So once we sign, I mean, once, if this, the board's in agreement here to move forward with this, um, and we sign it, it goes into effect immediately as we have agreement with the, um, from Mohammed, um, how soon would we be started on this?
We don't have a specific, an exact date at this point, but they, they, he's indicated to me that they're ready to move forward. They've got, they, they want to do it while they, while they have, you know, forces nearby that are working.
Right.
So it'll be, it'll be very soon. Yes, Mark, a little.
He said he wanted to start it as soon as possible.
Right. They have a little bit of design work and they take our permits, you know, that kind of thing, but, but, yeah. Could we set it to permits?
Of course. Yep. Have to give ourselves our own permit.
Well, in this case, Ari, somebody build a force, you really got to do the permit.
Yeah. No, you don't. Yep. Yep. Um, okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve this donation agreement with the residences at LaBarren Hills for construction of an addition for the Department of Public Works Maintenance Facility.
Go on, Rich. This is your night.
Um, second, oh, I'll make that motion. So moved, sorry.
Second.
I was prepared.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Any other comments, concerns? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Boy, that feels good.
Thank you.
Very much. Rich, I know you've been working on that for, you know.
I'd like to bring something up having to do with the highway department, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Um, over the last couple of years, that we have appropriated $225,000 for that building. I'd like the board to consider in the budget process to repurpose that money to be used for a septic system, the parking lot paving and stormwater management. So, uh, if you could review that.
So the lot of yours is capital project.
Right. Because, you know, it's, it's planned to be done in '25. It's not planned to be done in '24, but if you take this money, repurpose it, then, um, we can finally get the highway department.
Settled.
Settled.
Makes sense, yeah.
So I hope you consider.
The only caveat I have is I won't make sure we have enough money for furniture and fixtures for the building, but I think, I think it's going to be a small number.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. This really is a long time coming. I mean, for anyone who doesn't know, even though we've talked about it many, many times, it went from that, those god awful trailers they were in, we tried to buy new trailers, then we tried to buy other kind of temporary housing. So this really has been, you know, and again, you know, I, I think we owe the folks that go out in the middle of the night to plow our streets, uh, you know, the comfort of actually having a lunch table that isn't in the greasy garage. So, um, anyways, um, I appreciate all the work that you put into that, Rich and Ari. Um, okay, so this next agenda item is review and possible vote to approve a memorandum of understanding for the South Coast Public Health Collaborative. Um, John, I don't know if you want to.
No, it's, it's actually Ed.
Oh, Ed. I'm sorry, Ed. All right. Um, so what do we got here?
Um, the South Coast Collaborative is just a group of six towns, Lakeville, um, Freetown, Rochester, Marion, Mattapoisett and Westport, all joining together. All 351 towns in Massachusetts are in some type of collaborative. Ours is the South Coast.
Yep.
Um, and what it is, is the state was trying to, um, give a little help to a lot of boards of health rather than doing them individually and try to track it and everything. They did it to collaborative. So they have a lot fewer than 351 to follow up on. So they give us, um, $300,000 per year to share between the six towns. Um, it's, it's a lot of money. It's no cost to the town of Lakeville. Um, it's money from the state that we can use. We can't buy capital projects. We can't buy vehicles and things like that. But it, it, it does help out a lot with resource. out a lot with resources and things like that, and that's the idea. They're trying to give us more resources and kind of keep track of how we're spending it. That's why it's in the form of collaboratives rather than to individual board health.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ed?
So, I mean, I did read through all of this, but again, legalese, I could have missed something, interpreted something incorrectly. So we all have a seat at the table, correct?
Correct.
And would that be a Board of Health elected official, or would you be?
No, I, I would attend the meetings, and that's really the only thing they're really asking is, is, well, once a month, I, we, we meet. Most of them are Zoom, so I don't have to, it's just an hour, you know, from Zoom. But occasionally, we do meet in person, so it's my time for those meetings. But what we get back is so much more.
Right.
And that, and like I said, the meetings just are, we determine how we spend the money. And they are, the collaborative is hiring people, and they'll actually be hired through Westport, the town of Westport, because they're the lead agency. So it's not like anyone would come on the town of Lakeville's payroll or anything like that. There's no benefits or anything like that for them. And like I said, Westport, they get an extra fee because they're the lead agency, but they actually have to do a little more.
Smart administration.
Yeah.
Do you see any thing that would hold you back for doing something like this, for us participating?
No, I, I think overall, it's, it's a good thing. Like I said, it, it does give us more resources, and that's what a lot of, no, although Lakeville does a very good job of supporting the Board of Health, that's not the case for a lot of towns, and I think that was the incentive for, for doing it, because they, they weren't getting the support, so the state did that. But, but Lakeville's benefiting that. Like I said, I don't think that Lakeville was the, is, has the bigger need as some of the smaller towns. It's, it's mainly smaller towns that will benefit the most, I think. But Lakeville will definitely benefit, and I think it's a good thing for the entire state and for the town of Lakeville.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else?
I'm all set.
All set. So I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the South Coast Public Health Collaborative. So moved. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 For me, it was just FYI, there's also going to be a form from KP Law, who is, who is representing the collaborative as they put together their, their new IMA.
Okay.
So it's just, it's just a disclosure. They wanted, they wanted, you know, the town to know that.
They're representing.
So you'll see that in your package as well.
So that was it, huh? That's what it was about?
Yeah.
That's what we found out about it.
We were a little confused on that.
Yeah, okay. All right. You don't have to vote to approve that, do we?
No.
Okay.
This is administrative disclosure.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Nice to see you. So next we have agenda item number nine. This is a possible vote to approve, review and possible vote for the mixtape race on April 16th, 2023.
Can I start this one off?
Sure, go right ahead.
So this came, this came in through the public way license application to DPW, and the Public Works Department circulated, usually do, moved it through. One thing they did not do, because they don't want to think of this with the public way license applications, was refer to the Parks Commission. So it came to my attention on Friday that the Parks Commission didn't, wasn't really aware of the event, which I apologize for, and I sent you all an email over the weekend. We're going to be adjusting this form going forward to allow for Parks Commission review when an event, you know, falls within there. They have already booked with Boston Tavern, they just didn't talk to the Parks Commission. I don't know why. This is not the first year they've done this event, but it just didn't happen this time.
Okay. So the riders do leave Ted Williams Camp, and then they use other roads in town, but they don't end up at Ted Williams. Oh, no, they do end up at Ted Williams. They go to Mass Lloyd State Park and then go back to Ted Williams.
It's mostly off-road riding, from what I understand.
Yeah, and, and this has been going, this race has been taking place for, you know, a while, a few years, I think. So, okay. So.
So my suggestion was that you, if you want to approve it, sign it and prove it subject, you know, subject to the Parks Commission.
Yep. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve this public way license application for rock hard racing for the mixtape on April 16th, 2023, subject to the park commissioner's approval of the same.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that these are the type of races that we want, because these are nonprofits.
Yeah.
Okay, and this one, I believe, is raising money for Children's Hospital.
Right.
A hundred percent of the proceeds goes to Children's Hospital, which is great, compared to one other race that we have here in town is different.
Yep.
So I, this is, this is a good thing.
All right. Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we have minutes of March 6th and March 8th. Any comments, adjustments, corrections, or other edits?
I do, do we want to, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the March 6th, 2023 Select Board Minutes and discussion.
Okay.
Second.
And discussion?
Okay, so I do have, well, a few things in here. The first thing, because we met with the Finance Committee for three meetings regarding the budget with the department heads, throughout the document, the FinCom Chairman Day has made comments or reflected and joined in the conversation. So throughout, it just says Chairman Day. I don't want the confusion. So can we put FinCom Chairman?
FinCom Chairman, yep.
And then on page two, first paragraph, there are the last sentence, it says Chairman Day asked if said the town thinks. I think we just need to say Chairman Day asked if the town thinks. Then, under the treasure, treasure attacks collector, second to last paragraph, third sentence, where she says she has a new staff member, so she would like to send her in the assistant to training? I think it would be, I think it was training.
Yeah, we need to specify.
Um, I think it was training.
I just put a question mark there. Maybe we can follow up on that.
We'll take care of that.
Last paragraph, on page two, halfway down, the Route 79 Reconstruction Debt Exclusion Project has been slow-moving due to spending? I didn't go back and watch it, but.
I'll go watch it.
Okay. It was slow-moving due to something, but I don't know that it was spending.
It's not really, it's not really the, it's not very accurate, no.
And then, page three, under the Board of Assessors, second paragraph, Member Carbone asked if CAI. I didn't see it referenced anywhere prior to this, and I, I know that the company is, there's a name for the company that we use that does the system. I didn't know if we could spell it out, but I don't.
I think that's just the name of the company, CAI.
Yeah, that might be, we'll check.
But we'll check. And the rest of them were just the Chairman Day on that, so we'll call him on that, on the sixth.
Okay, so all those in favor with those corrections?
All right.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Want to do the next one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes for March 8th, 2023, and for discussion.
Okay.
All right, same thing with the Chairman Day. And then, through most of it, it was referencing Vice Chair Fabian, but then it went down to Vice Fabian. And I think that unless you got a job as a, as a vice, I thought that was kind of cool. But that would be pretty much throughout the document. We can add that. And that was it for comments on that one. Thank you.
All those in favor with that correction?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Excellent. Moving right along. New business. Lorraine, do you have new business?
I think we do.
Okay.
I think we do have some new business.
All right.
Not to, would you, would you like to, all right, so anyways, we do have some new business.
Rich is like, what is going on?
So we have a frame here, and it contains a proclamation from the town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, for a member sitting at this board, at this table, who is experiencing their last meeting, but I know it's a really, it's kind of a sad thing, bittersweet, so we'll, but if it's okay with you, Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to read this.
Sure.
So Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts.
Want to make a motion?
To.
Accept it, or?
Do we do it after?
We can do it after.
All right, so whereas Richard LaCamera became a resident of Lakeville in 1976 and has lived in Lakeville for the past 47 years with his wife Susan of 50 years, raising their four children. And whereas Richard LaCamera began his career serving the residents of Lakeville in 1983, serving as a member of the Lakeville Finance Committee from 1983 to 1999, whereas Richard LaCamera began his service as a member of the Board of Selectmen in 1998 and served for three-year, three-year term, ending in April 2007. During these years, he also served on Negotiating Committee for Lakeville Hospital, Growth Task Force, Joint Transportation Planning Group, Parking Clerk, Lakeville Hospital Reuse Committee, Master Plan Committee, Town Administrator Search Committee, Lakeville Planning Committee, Commission on Disability, Lakeville Public Safety, Lakeville Development Corporation Trustee, and Capital Expenditures Committee. And whereas in 2015, Richard LaCamera was elected to serve as a member of the Library Board of Trustees and served as a trustee through 2021. Whereas Richard LaCamera was elected in 2019 for a one-year term as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and then was reelected in 2020 for a three-year term. And during this time, he also served on the Capital Expenditures Committee, Project Review Committee for 43D Rent Control Board, and as American with Disabilities Act Coordinator. And whereas Richard LaCamera has been an outstanding advocate regarding the needs of public facilities, serving on the Police Station Building Committee, Library Building Committee, and the Senior Center Building Committee, he has also served on the School Building Study Committee from 1983 to 1985, and the Fire Station Town Office Feasibility Study Committee in 2004. Whereas Richard LaCamera, Richard LaCamera's serve, years of dedication to making Lakeville a better place for its town residents, has been immeasurable. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board and the Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2023, as Richard LaCamera Day, and wish to express our sincere appreciation to Richard for his loyalty and hard work for the citizens of Lakeville. On behalf of the, of the Select Board and the citizens of Lakeville, this resolution is signed, sealed, and delivered on the 27th day of March in the year 2023 by Select Board of Agalia Fabian and Lorraine Carbone.
Thank you.
No, really, Rich, thank you. Can I make a motion to accept that now?
Yes, and I'll allow second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is for you.
Thank you.
You know, it's been a, it's been a crazy year in Lakeville, and I think sometimes folks that come, and I always say, it doesn't matter what brings people to start paying attention to their local government. One vote does make a difference at town meeting, we know that. But, you know, for folks like Rich and the level of your involvement, the hospital just isn't a new project. You've been looking at that hospital property. You're a pretty smart guy. If it was that easy, there would have been a solution a long time ago. And that's why, you know, sometimes these things are just so, so, so difficult for those of us that are sitting in the chair. And I really just want to thank you for your years. I remember following Rich when I owned a business in town. I mean, those years, some of those years are significant for me. One of the years, I was having a baby that year, you know, while you were taking care of the town and laying the groundwork for some of us to take our rightful place, you know, at that time. I'm actually very happy I got to serve with you. I've learned so much from you. And I hope going forward, as, you know, this board changes and as the board expands to five people, I, I hope that, you know, the emotion will go aside and that folks will look back at your work and say, I really cared about the town of Lakeville. That's all that's to it. And, you know, you always, always, always. I've debated you on town meeting floor over the overlay money one year. We've debated here. People call it fighting. It's not fighting, it's debating, because it takes all different types of opinions. But I am the one who's fortunate to have served with you and to have learned from you. I will always thank you for that. You can say now what you want.
Rich, you know, we've worked together for, you know, through quite a long, lot of years, actually. It goes back to 2000.
Has it really?
Yeah, that's when I first started with the, with the Lakeville School Committee. And, you know, it's been a lot of change happening in our, our small little town and the growth that we've experienced. And, you know, you and I, I think we've always agreed to disagree, but at the end of the day, we could still have a cup of coffee and still get along. So that I can appreciate. As Leah said, you know, she's learned a lot. I know that you were instrumental in, in what I learned about public service, infrastructure, policy, all the little moving parts. And, you know, it's, it's not an easy thing to learn, but if you are interested, there are people there that are willing to teach you. And I appreciate the fact that you were willing to be that person for me way back when, to teach me what I needed to know to be a better contributor as an elected official. So for that, I, and I know, and I know where you live, too. So I'll just drive by and, you know, and be, and rave and.
Yeah, he'll be on a cruise.
No, I just want to thank the board and all the other boards, too, you know, over the years that I've served with. But just as important as that, you know, is that the employees, you know, the town has some terrific employees, and without them, our jobs would be a lot more difficult. And like, I think, I don't know if Leah said it or whatever, but, you know, there's been some challenges over the last few years, but very difficult, you know, to deal with. But we've always tried to do what's right for the town, and some people aren't going to agree with that, but that's okay. That happens. But, you know, it's just that it's time and getting old. And I just thank the, the residents for supporting me, you know, over the years as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any other new business? All right, let's move to old business, and I don't know if we have anything other than the budget. I do know we have some school, the assessment sheet, the newest one.
Walk you all through what we're, what we're seeing now. The, so far, this process, from the proposed budget that Friday to back in, in February, we've reduced expenditures by about $374,000. we've reduced expenditures by about $374,000 total, a little more. The way we've done that is, um, uh, the assessment estimate that we has a placeholder in the budget for, um, Freetown-Lakeville was 239, has gone down by 239,000 from its original number of 540,000. Old Colony, the assessment is down by close to $99,000. Um, Bristol County Aggie is down by $38,000 with, with one student gone. Um, we have one increase, and that was the Veterans Benefits Grade Markers of $2,000, so the net impact was $374,000. So the budget, we, we balanced the budget by reducing in several places. We, um, did reduce State Aid for the cherry sheets. Um, we're still hopeful that'll come back, um, with the House Ways and Means budget, but we'll see what happens with the, with the, that's mainly the SMARTG number. Local receipts are, are reduced from, from the initial budget by $295,000. So they are now below the FY '23 budget by about $214,000 now. Um, I see not of approval at the end of the table there. The state assessments, um, are down by $3,000. That was just the cherry sheets, it was a little bit unexpected. And, um, uh, and state, uh, state offsets are, are, um, by, uh, down by $1,000. Um, again, just for the cherry sheets. So, um, bottom line, I think, you know, we're, we're in demonstrably better shape than we were when we started this process. Um, due in large part to, we probably think the governor's proposed budget for a big part of that. Um, but also the continuing pressure and efforts we'd be making with the school districts, especially to, to move these numbers to a place where we needed to be. So that's all I got.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Um, the only question that I have is, is that, um, I'm, I'm happy that the, um, the school budget, the regional school budget is down because I was concerned right from the beginning, the amount was pretty high. Um, that's a good thing. Um, I did have one question, which I haven't got answered yet, and, uh, when I sent the email about the, uh, new assessment sheet last week, I believe, that, you know, the superintendent said there was going to be a substantial reduction in health insurance costs.
I haven't heard back on that yet.
But I mean, if it's substantial, I think we should, you should find out what that means, because number one, you should be able to reduce the budget. Number two, you should be able to reduce the assessment, because if they're going to benefit from that.
Reduce the budget, they should reduce the assessment.
We should, uh, we should benefit by that as well. So I don't know.
I've not heard anything new. I will certainly recharge, see what's.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the, uh, the adjustments on the local receipts. I appreciate that. I was very concerned about that, as I explained to you before.
I know you were.
A couple of times, and so I'm happy that they're down where I think they should be.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty sustainable number at this point.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right. Uh, if that's it, um.
We're thinking of session.
Yes. I just didn't know if Paula was here for a reason, or just. Oh, okay.
I appreciate that, Paula.
Okay, um, then.
You're welcome. I enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Made a lot of progress. We made a lot of progress in the last three years.
Yep. Lot of work. Um, all right. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contact negotiations with non-union personnel, and pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically with PBA Local 185, IAFF Local 3188, and Laborers International Union, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the Vice, so Vice Chair does declare, and pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with the Open Meeting Law, Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 22F, approval of executive session minutes for February 28, 2023, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carbone, aye.
Uh, LaCamera, aye.
Fabian, aye. Thank you.